Good evening, it's now six o'clock on Thursday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hankins? Mr. Ritz?
President.
Mr. Arnie? Mr. Sims? Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
We have a quorum. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. For your reference, a copy of the act is on the back wall of this chamber. At this time, I would ask anybody to silence their any cell phones they have. And I would also accept a motion to approve minutes of the December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting.
Motion to approve the December fifteenth minutes as written.
Second by Jacobson.
Motion by Ackley, second by Jacobson. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
At this time, I'd like to accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts for each application. Staff, any updates since the information went out last week?
Yes, we've had we've had several letters from some residents in town. Some concerning our one item that's on consent agenda and another concerning our cell tower that's gonna go up at Liberty, I'm sorry, at Liberty Tower, at the church. But other than that, we don't have anything else, and commissioners should have a copy of everything that we received.
Thank you. This time I entertain a motion to accept into the record all the reports, attachments, memos, and handouts.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
By Bennett, second by Perrin? Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
I believe we have guests here from OPPD tonight. And introduction of new OPPD contact?
Good evening, I am Michaela Valentine, Government and Community Relations Manager, OPPD. I've worked with many of you on the solar regulations about a year and a half back. And I'm pleased to announce that we are expanding the local government affairs team. I'd like to introduce you to my colleague Dustin Marvel, and he will say a little bit about himself.
Good evening, thank you for making time for us to come and talk to you guys tonight. Dustin Marvel, so I am associated, as Michaela said, with our local government affairs and community relations team. Happy to be joining OPPD here. I came from BNSF Railway where I spent fourteen years in various positions around the country. So kinda had a pretty good perspective around different jurisdictions and whatnot. During that timeframe, I was actually with the police department with them. So a little transition over to OPPD and public power and all of the good things that we're doing here. I am going to leave our Power with Purpose brochure basically with you all. Kinda goes through some of the projects and things that we're currently working on. As you guys are well aware, there are some things here within Sarpy County as well that are currently underway. As well as leave you with my business card. As Michaela mentioned, it's kind of hand in hand. So if I can help you or Michaela can help you, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're here to kinda answer any questions or at least guide in in a direction that maybe we can help get you answers for whatever it is that maybe you're being asked about or presented with. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take it. But it's again a pleasure to take time to come meet you all tonight.
Any questions, commissioners? Alright, well, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay. We're gonna move into our public hearings. We have several tonight, and we have several people here. So I reserve the right to limit public input to five minutes per person if there are a lot of people that wanted to speak on a particular issue. Just some background on the public hearing process. I will announce the hearing case and then ask staff to provide any updates. Since the reports have been prepared, the applicant will come forward and present the request. And then I will open it up for public comment. And if you're coming forward to speak on a particular application, please come up and announce or say your name and address for the record, but then you also need to sign in on the sheet that's up at the podium. The applicant will then have, once the public comment period is closed for each application, the applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal. And then I will turn it over to the commissioners for consideration. So our first public hearing on the agenda is three A. Our request to rezone lots one and two, Compass Hill, being a replat of tax lot eight A located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, ridgeline thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RD six dash sixty for the purpose of residential development and small subdivision plat lots one and two, Compass Hill. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County, general location eight twenty West Avery Road. Case numbers Z dash twenty-two twelve dash thirteen and S dash twenty-two twelve dash twenty-seven. Is the applicant here?
Here.
Can you please come forward? Just a moment before you proceed, if you could sign in. Do you have any updates for us on this case?
No updates on it, just a brief overview.
Okay.
So the purpose of this is to obtain a rezoning and a small subdivision plat for the purpose of residential development. Just to let you know, this was originally approved redevelopment plan or blighted substandard, I'm sorry, it was originally approved for blighted substandard. So this is just the next step in that process for redevelopment.
Thank you, please go ahead.
My name is Dan Brewer, I'm with Habitat for Humanity.
And your address, please, for the record?
Seventeen oh one North Twenty-Fourth Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Can you explain a little bit about your application?
Our application is to rezone the tax lots as stated. The purpose of that is the Rymonds who currently own the property have graciously agreed to sell Habitat a portion. And we're splitting that, those tax lots into two parts. The Rymonds will maintain their current residence and, which would be lot one. Lot two would be sold by them to Habitat once the, once the process is completed. And then our, our future plans would be to use that for single-family residential development, which would merge into our Compass Hill project just to the north.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open this now for public comment. As I said, if you are here to speak on this issue, please come up and sign in and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, and I'm gonna close the public hearing. And turn it over to the commissioners, commissioners, comments, questions?
I had a question for staff. I guess the document says public works engineer had a issue or question about the small subdivision plat size. For RD sixty, can you confirm for, for duplex residential, the minimum lot area is six thousand square feet?
That is correct.
And twelve thousand for a single family still?
That is correct, six thousand feet. I don't have the ordinance in front, or the, yeah, our ordinance in front of me, but yeah, for the size it is.
Okay.
Six thousand square feet.
Thank you kindly.
Question for staff, we had two letters come in, mostly it deals with where the roads would end up. Again, we're not at that stage of the game based on this being zoning, but is that something that you respond back to these folks individually or should we?
At this time, these letters have nothing to do with what is, what he's requesting tonight. Right now, we're just dealing with, you know, tax lot eight A. It has nothing to do with the streets or anything like that. So right now, we don't have anything, any plats or anything to say that any of those roads are gonna change. I know that there was some concern about some of the streets going through Tenth Street. And another one with Ninth Street ending at a T intersection and things like that. Right now, again, this has, these letters have nothing to do with what the case is tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Chair, if there's no other comments from the other commissioners, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone lots one and two of Compass Hill from AG to RD sixty for the purpose of residential development. Based on conformance with our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area.
Second by Hankins.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Hankin, Hankins? Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This matter will go before the city council on February twenty-first. Okay, moving on to our next public hearing, four A, a request to rezone lot one, college apartment addition from RG dash eight to RG dash eight dash PS for the purpose of multifamily development with site plan approval. Applicant Elevate Lots LLC, general location four hundred West Nineteenth Avenue. Case number Z dash twenty-two ten dash twelve, staff any updates?
No updates, this, this particular one has been continued indefinitely. So we have nothing new on this one to discuss tonight.
Okay. We do have to open it up for a public hearing. Don't, do we, okay, sorry, I was thinking ahead to the next one. Yeah, okay, so commissioners? Questions, comments?
Need a motion, right?
Yes, I do.
I'd make a motion that we continue this application indefinitely so that if they ever come back with the application, they have to renotice and give neighbors an opportunity to come to the meeting.
Second by Ritz.
Motion by Ackley, second by Ritz. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, moving on to four B, request to approve the redevelopment plan for lot two. Here and There Edition, applicant here, there, and everywhere LLC. General location twenty-three zero six Lincoln Road, case number ECD dash sixty. Is the applicant here? Oh, and before we get that far, staff, any updates?
No, no updates on this one. Well, I guess I should say there is one update. One of our commissioners noticed that there was an error in one of the figures on here, so they did correct that and resubmit that to us. Otherwise, there are no updates on this one.
Okay, thank you, okay, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Robbie Ryan, one four zero zero six Charles Street, Omaha, six eight one five four. Representing Here, There, and Everywhere LLC. We are proposing a redevelopment of lot two there, we separated the lots there. We are proposing twenty-five units, nine over-under duplexes. Handicap which are accessible on the first floor. Two to one parking. So every, every bedroom will have a parking spot. We think we have a great plan that we're trying to hit the missing middle. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on out by seventy-five, it's getting big rents. We think we have a good project. Nice price point on the rents, backside of the gate, we think it's a good plan, so. I just wanna embarrass my kids right here, I brought them here, this is Bo, this is JP, it's my partner Todd. I wanna show them how government works, I brought them along, you can see they're so excited.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna open it up to the public hearing, so we may
Any questions?
Well, we may bring it back up, but opening it up for the public hearing, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this particular matter? Okay, seeing none. Turn it over to the commissioners, commissioners, do you have questions, comments?
If it, please, this is Chair, I have one question for the applicant. Hi, you mentioned middle housing. We might not all be on the same page as to what that means, so could you go into a little bit of explanation of what that means to get us all on the same page?
So it's called the missing middle, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the average median income. So this particular project would be about a dollar and thirty-three cents per square foot for the one bedrooms and two bedrooms. So roughly a dollar thirty-three for the nine hundred square foot one bedrooms and a dollar seventeen a foot for the two bedrooms. So roughly under a thousand dollars for the one bedrooms and, and just under twelve hundred dollars for the two bedrooms. And that meets eighty to the hundred and twenty percent of the AMI, average median income.
So you, your thinking is that this, this price range you're talking about kinda fills in between single-family housing and high-rise apartments somewhere, and that's what the middle?
Stuff on seventy-five there, it's going for two dollars a foot, you know? So yeah, we think we have a good price plan, it's called the missing middle, and there's been a bunch of studies done. Worked with Carolyn, the Sarpy County and Bellevue Housing Authority to really kinda see what the need was. And we think we have a great infill project that'll hit, hit that. And we also have, the first floors will be zero entry, so there's a big need for handicap housing. So it'll be zero entry, so we can accommodate that too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-on question for staff. I believe in general, the metro area in Bellevue's identified middle housing is a priority issue. Thank you.
You're welcome. Stay there for a moment.
I guess my question, just straightforward, I mean, you're asking for TIF on this, it's a pretty level flat site, the demo's not gonna cost too much. What's the constraining factor that's driving the TIF need?
So underground utilities. So if you head south, towards the, towards the base or across the street is the only way to get water. So we have to time that, bring it across the street. And underground utilities, they're expensive, you know, to move them X feet, costs a lot of money. So in that TIF application, you know, TIF eligible expenses are demo, site work, utilities, professional fees, you know, architect engineering.
I guess, and I looked at the, I looked at the fees and everything seems about reasonable with what you're kinda saying about bringing it across the street, the, all those fees, it just, I, I guess my question is, you know, TIF is supposed to be for helping develop properties that wouldn't be developed or could not be developed economically without it. I understand that the utilities are across the street. I know that there's some water lines up a hill by Bel Air. I don't know if any of them are closer, I'm assuming that you guys have looked at all those. It's just, like I said, my question is, other than, you know, maybe double the cost for utilities that you've got at two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand, what, what's the other driving factor? Is there kind of any? And I'm not trying to put you on the defensive, I'm trying to understand.
Absolutely, I understand. So TIF eligible expenses, you have professional fees on a project five million dollars, excuse me. Probably three hundred and some thousand for structural, civil, MEPs. You have the site work, demolition, ref grading, so, I mean, you got two, three hundred in site work, you got three hundred in professional fees. You know, the property purchase price can be, you know, TIF eligible, so you get a million bucks pretty quick.
And like I said, all the numbers that you've got on your exhibit A are reasonable, what I would expect kind of for that property that you're, you're talking about. I'm assuming that because you guys are using, aiming for the middle housing, that your return on investment's lower? And that's what's kinda driving the need to have the TIF to help reduce that cost?
So that's the but for, right? Project wouldn't work but for TIF. So because we're trying to hit a missing middle rent, to keep that, yeah, I mean, we need the TIF.
Alright. My next question is on your exhibit C. You've got your pro forma. The without TIF, you got the negative, with TIF you got the positive. I guess at first glance, it seems like you're almost making money by the way that this is laid out. Can you just help me to understand what the, the negative goes and the positive?
Well, we are for profit.
Yeah.
Just checking. Yeah, I mean, you can see with, without the TIF, I mean, to achieve a, you know, six percent return, without the TIF, it's underwater.
Okay. So it, that's what that means, is without the TIF, your project's underwater.
We're underwater.
With the TIF, you're allowed to be able to make a
With the TIF, we, we flip, yeah, to four grand a month.
Yeah. And I'm not, you know, like you said, you're for profit, and I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding where the numbers come from and everything.
Yep, absolutely.
This is a question more for staff, that's just a general one. Is there any, you know, safeguards in place after projects are awarded TIF that kind of reconcile to confirm that their estimates for the TIF eligible expenses are coming true? Or is that kind of, hey, it's reasonable at the beginning, he gets to the project, the utility line's only half that cost, he's kinda, and I'm, and not, not, I'm just using, using this example. But does the city have, you know, safeguards in place for these, just 'cause it seems like we're getting a lot more TIF more frequently now?
We are having a lot more TIF come to us, but as for an answer to that question, I really don't know if there are any safeguards in place for that.
Okay.
That's something I can ask about and find out about, but I am not sure about that.
So that area is already blighted, substandard, it's already been approved. So I'll tell you a little background on that. There's only been one TIF that's failed in thirty years in the state of Nebraska that didn't meet. And it was a project in western Nebraska that never met the evaluation that they, that they set to recoup it for taxes. So we have a fifteen-year note from the city, we amortize that over thirteen and a half years. So we as developers don't wanna take too much because we, if we don't generate enough taxes, we'll have to pay it back, right?
Yeah.
We have to cut checks. So we try to be conservative on that, so in thirteen and a half years, the taxes cover it and pay it back, so we don't have to write checks. But I can tell you, there's only been one TIF that failed in thirty years in Nebraska.
I appreciate that, 'cause that helps me to understand that, you know, there's an incentive not to abuse the system because you're gonna buy your, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We take too much, thirteen and a half years, it doesn't generate enough, you know, taxes, we have to cut big checks and that's
That's, that's all my questions, again, I apologize.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Or motions?
No one else has any comments? I would make a motion to approve the redevelopment plan for lot two, Here and There Edition, location twenty-three oh six Lincoln Road.
Second by Hankins.
Motion by Ritz, second by Hankins. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy new year.
Happy new year. And this will go before the planning, or excuse me, the city council on February twenty-first. Okay, moving on to four C, our request for a conditional use permit for lot one, Tiller's Fifth Edition for the purpose of a church in an existing commercial building. Applicant The Glory Tabernacle Incorporated, general location sixteen twenty Wilshire Drive, suite one oh three. Case number CUP dash twenty-two twelve dash zero six, staff, any updates?
One thing I did, we did receive an email from a commissioner asking about some of the lots there, and I'll discuss that later. Other than that, we didn't have any updates.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Hello, I'm Pastor Clifton Hobbs, pastor of The Glory Tabernacle. My address is twenty-nine ten Sheridan Road, Bellevue, Nebraska, and
Excuse me, could you sign in too, please?
Yeah. While you sign in Pastor, I'll just give them a little, a brief update of what this is for. This is a CUP, a conditional use permit, to have a church in a commercial building. It's gonna be located at sixteen twenty Wilshire Drive. And I was talking about the parking spaces and all of that. Well, the church is going to have Sunday services at ten thirty AM. And Bible study, and that's on Sundays, and then Bible study on Wednesdays at six thirty PM. So church services will not interfere with any of the regular business that's happening throughout the week. So with the parking stalls, we were asked if the parking stalls that were provided for that business, because there's another business in there that needed additional parking stalls. We have already talked to the owner, and he sent a letter and assured us that there's more than enough parking stalls. Uh, we have already talked to the owner and he sent a letter and assured us that there's more than enough parking stalls for them to have the church there.
Please go ahead pastor.
That sums it up. We're playing for conditional use to have our services in in the the building at sixteen twenty Wilshire.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter? So seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Commissioners? Comments, questions? And pastor, if they do have some, you'll we'll need you to come back up, but.
I think we have the pleasure of uh speaking to Jerry Teeter last month and the night before, who owns the property. Uh, he wrote in, the current tenant roster has been made aware of the church moving in and no, no one raised any concerns, so I don't have any. Issues with this at all.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Well, if uh none of the commissioners have any other comments or want to uh make a motion, I'll make a motion to uh. Recommend approval of this item. For a conditional use permit, lot one, Tiller's Fifth Edition for the purpose of a church in an existing commercial building. Uh approval based upon uh conformance with our section six point oh six of our zoning ordinance, as well as perceived lack of uh negative impact. Upon the surrounding area.
Is there a second?
Second by Bennett.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Bennett, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
And that too will go before the city council on February twenty-first. That brings us to four D.
Uh, if the chair pleases, before we uh get into item four D, I uh. Want to declare uh that I'm being impartial in this. I actually attend that church, however, I have had no conversation with any of the church staff. Or the actual applicant. I've had no contact with the uh. Staff or any of the committees that might be involved in this item. I have no knowledge of any terms of conditions. And have not been a part of any of the applications with either the church or the applicant. On this particular agenda item. So I believe I can be impartial in the discussion and voting of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Four D is a request for a conditional use for permit for lot one, First Presbyterian Church of Bellevue, for the purpose of a. One hundred sixty-five foot monopole tower, applicant new singular wireless PCS dash LLC. General location twelve twenty Bellevue Boulevard South, case number CUP dash twenty-two twelve dash zero seven. Staff, any updates?
Um, we did receive an email today from. A Mr. Ed Conan with some questions. Um, and after the applicant comes up, I guess I can go over those. Um, but just a brief overview. This is a conditional use permit um to make a request for a one hundred sixty-five foot monopole. Um, that will be located um at the end of the church parking lot. It's just on the other side of the guardrails there at the. End of the church parking lot. The church is leasing that property to the wireless um communication service here. Other than that, I really don't have anything. Um, I think the applicant is here.
If you could come forward, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Ward with Ward Development, Fifteen Park Place, Swansea, Illinois. Um, I'm here to present this case for AT&T or new singular wireless PCS. Um, as as mentioned, this is a proposal for a.
Could you sign in, please?
I was gonna try and talk and write at the same time, but I'm not very good at multitasking. Um, and as said, it's a proposal for a hundred sixty-five foot monopole um to serve AT&T. It's uh designed to be at the rear of the church parking lot. The site will be designed for multi-users. So we figure that this site could probably hold three to four different carriers as need would progress. Um, we meet all the conditions of the ordinance, save one where the city had asked for us to provide the FAA. We have that in process. It's obviously involved with Offutt Air Force Base, so we've asked that any approvals or conditions be. That we cannot proceed with any construction, obviously, until we get that FAA approval. The other comment that we had from the city was that our fence be opaque, so it's sight-proof fence. So we'll be working with the church on what that opaque fence is and what type of landscaping would go around that. But I'm really here, are you familiar with cell towers? I'm sure you've seen those before. I'm here to answer any questions that that you all may have, and I think there's probably some coming from the audience. I've seen the letter that you referred to, and I'll be able to answer those once we get into that issue.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing now. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Seems like it's been about five years we had several. Cell towers, applications came through, two involved churches, and I think the one on. Three seventy and thirty-six, they kind of put it into the the tower of the church to kind of build it into the. Architecture, and then they did the same with the one on twenty-fifth and I think it's Fairview Road. Um, any consideration on instead of having this as a standalone, that somehow we can build it into the. Church steeple or other structures that are already there?
Yes, please, please.
Uh, the issue is we need such a taller structure. It just wouldn't fit into the the existing church steeple or their architecture. So we're we're in need of about a hundred and sixty foot of elevation. That also gives us the ability to put the other carriers as we would need, because the city promotes co-location. So typically, that stacking would be about every twenty feet. So you'd have one sixty, one forty, one twenty, one hundred. That's where we get the four carriers. You get below that, you start getting to the tree clutter and the tower wouldn't be effective. But we do attempt to use existing architecture, existing structures whenever we can. The report we turned in, there are existing towers to the uh in the area as well, and those were all looked at and reviewed. And I've got a couple of pictures of those. If you want to see those, I can pass that around later on.
I guess. My my thought is, uh, if you'd like to talk about the, if you if you if you've seen the questions from Mr. From Ed, I can't say his last name, I'm gonna butcher it.
Uh, I'll I'll say Cronin, is that correct? Okay, I'm sorry. I I did see those and I can't address, hopefully address those for you. Got my phone, so I'm looking at them. Um, the first one had to do with uh. Uh, and I'll sit, I I don't want to read the whole thing, but I'll give a synopsis if that's okay. Is the tower to be safe to be around? Um, they're asking about five G and we're five hundred feet away from. Um, a a preschool that's within the church. RF emissions are regulated by the FCC. Um, local governments are precluded from taking into account RF emissions as part of their review. That's part of the nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act. However, I can say. The way RF emissions kind of drop off or work is it's it's at the inverse square of the distance. So if I'm five hundred feet away from the antenna, I'm at one two hundred and twenty. Two hundred and twenty-five thousandths of the effect of the antenna. So once you really get away from the cellphone antenna, it drops off into the atmosphere. Take that into account, we use sixty watts, so. You know, one quarter millionth of sixty watts versus this at two watts. The phone, in other words, the phone has a lot more risk than the ant- the antennas on the tower. Oh, let me go on. I'm not very good at my phone either, obviously.
We have a copy of the. Of the questions you can have.
Me trying to scroll up here, I s- I'm so sorry. I should have printed that out ahead of time. Uh, the conditional use permit res- requests an eighty-foot fall zone. Typically, the city requests a height of the. Tower fall zone. We meet that on three of the four sides of the tower. The other side's a vacant lot that's owned by the city. Um, I was told by Ms. Palm that the city's in the process of selling that lot. But we explained to Tammy at the time, and we'll provide a letter for that, that typically the towers don't. They don't tip over, they don't fall out of the foundation. There's a weak point within the tower, if you want to call it a weak point. But the failure points at about the halfway point, and it can be slid up or down. So a tower, if it would ever fail, is gonna bend like a soda straw rather than fall out of its foundation. So we'll be with, we'll, that's where our eighty-foot fall zone comes from. And what he, what the question was is there's power lines in the area. Well, we did take a look at those, those are ninety feet away. So the tower would not hit the power line. Is the is the site suitable for a hundred sixty-five foot tower? This is in reference to some backfill that was done for the parking lot and the extension. Um, we will do a soils exploration, we'll provide that with our tower design. If we find that we can't build there, obviously, we won't, but we'll we'll perform a geotechnical exploration. Typically, what happens is. We will bore past any fill. We'll go through any of that concrete, any of that rubble and get down into good dirt or bedrock. But that's part of the the design of the tower. Uh, conversely, let's say we were in sandy soils, we would put it, instead of going through that, we would put it on a slab or a pier. Instead of a pier, we go on a slab and distribute the weight that way. So we'll provide that to the city when we get to that design point. Is the site consistent with a residential neighborhood? Well, the entire area is residential or parked, so I mean, we're we're limited on. Choices in the area, but what he's asking for is about the a sidewalk. And I think Tammy answered that uh separately about the sidewalk and contributions. Oh, about a tax exempt, I I can't really get into that, I just don't, I don't know anything about that. And then the other was a sidewalk waiver. Um, and again, I think Tammy addressed that separately.
Is there any information you want to add?
I will. As for the setback, um, it's currently zoned RD sixty where this tower is gonna be sitting. They have a five-foot side yard or rear yard setback currently. He has a seventy-five foot setback that we request, request requested a little bit extra, so that brings him to that eighty foot. So it's gonna be exactly eighty foot setback from that property. And there's no adjoining property that we are concerned that it might fall on or hit. It's far enough back that I think everything's gonna be good.
And I thi- and I think the thinking was, it's not gonna fall on any existing or proposed structure that could be built, so if we're outside of those building setback lines. Nothing could ever be built within that area.
Correct.
Can you zoom in on the picture and you mentioned the city is selling some land there that'll be adjoining? I guess, can we?
It's it's about where the cursor is there. Ki- if you go to the right. I'm sorry, with that blue area, correct?
That's it right there.
Is that a usable parcel at all? Do you know, Ms. Curry?
Um, I don't know if it's usable. I don't know what that grade is. Can you pull that up, please, Diana?
That that's a severe grade. I drive by that every single day. It's, that's even worse than the one across the street we approved.
I know that from the tower to the road, there's a forty-foot drop. We did look at that.
So again, it's not gonna impact that lot regardless. Thank you.
I I understand that you've applied to the FAA to get approval for this because it is so tall, um and I think it's. I'm guessing it's about twice as tall as the one we approved on three seventy where they built that uh fake um tower around it. Can you just confirm that Offutt has already looked at it and kind of given the unofficial green light or anything? Has the city talked to Offutt just because? I know that uh I I see planes flying a little bit low these days as they're training, and uh this is not that low, so.
Offutt did look at it. We always send it out to them and they had no concerns.
Okay. I just didn't see that little note in here like I sometimes do. And I I could have missed it.
And and as part of the F- the FAA that we do, that's done through, obviously, through the FAA, but they also circulate that. So Offutt will be, you know, Offutt will definitely review that. So even if the FAA has directions for us. Offutt can have additional directions for us, so and when that report comes in, we'll provide a copy of that, and obviously, we'll follow it.
And then just a few random comments. Um, I live about not even half a mile from the site. So, you know, the concerns about the RF exposure. Are things that I considered when I moved in because there is major power lines going across. We've got other um radio towers um around. You know, it's uh like you said, the the exposure from my cellphone that I hold in my pocket every day is more. Um, my kid actually went to that school, that preschool. I can tell you honestly, for the record, I'm not. Concerned for any of the kids that are going to that school. As for all the questions that I have about, man, how are you gonna build that thing on such a steep embankment? How are you gonna do this? How are you gonna do that? That's stuff that's gonna be handled by the permits department and the engineers at City Hall when you get to that step. And I'm trying to keep my blinders on and remind us that our blinders are, are we okay with them putting a tower there? Not, do we think that it's a smart idea to build it because it's their money building it? If you gotta go down a hundred feet to hit bedrock and that's the only way to build it, that's, you know, cost benefit for you guys, so. Um, just gonna say on the record, you know, put my hat on, I'm fine with a a very, very tall tower there because I do think it's gonna. Help improve the old town community, cuz uh. We don't got the greatest cell service down there, so.
Any other comments or questions? Motions?
If uh no one else has any more comments, I would make a motion to. Approve the conditional use permit for the. Approval based upon conformance with section six oh six zoning ordinance as la- as well as lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area. Contingent upon receipt of the de- determination of no hazard from the FAA.
Second.
Motion by Ritz, second by Ackley. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Do we have any current business? No, no current business. Alright, then I would ente- entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second by Jacobson.